He was in an skydaming accident. Engine died. Engine quit.
I'd like to call our meeting back to order and we're on the part of the agenda where we deal with the recognitions and awards. Laurlee?
Thank you. Welcome to our special guests and our business partners tonight. I'm going to ask Mr. Jim Smith, our Director of Community Development, to come forward for the business partner recognition. And we'll start by recognizing Lynn Lee Holdman, who has been recognized by the Olathe Noon Rotary as Rotary Teacher of the Year. Lynn Lee is a second grade teacher at Cedar Creek Elementary and has also taught at Washington. Earlier this year, she was recognized as an outstanding educator by the Olathe Public Schools Foundation. And now, she's been named Rotary Teacher of the Year by the Olathe Noon Rotary, and she placed second in the entire Kansas District as the Educator of the Year. She likes to connect with her students outside of school, for example, at their sporting events, and she models kindness and respect to everyone and, in fact, has been nominated for awards by one of her students. She also bridges the gap between home and school with calls, email, or even a quick visit as needed. We are proud to recognize her as the Rotary Teacher of the Year. Do you have any family members in the audience, like a proud dad?
[inaudible]
Okay.
Laurlee, I'd like to be her proud first grade teacher and acknowledge that.
Oh!
Congratulations, Lynn Lee.
That's quite an honor. Now, we'd like to recognize one of our young students, Sunil Iyer, who is a, will be a seventh grade student at Indian Trail Junior High School this year. Earlier, we recognized Sunil as the Kansas State Geography Bee Champion, and in May, he traveled to Washington, DC to the National Bee. I don't know if you can tell, but he's wearing his bee shirt. And that was sponsored by the National Geographic, where he was the youngest contestant there and took fourth place in the nation.
Hey, way to go.[151.19][151.19][applause]
He says he practiced by reading a lot of books and looking at maps, about an hour a day on weekdays and three hours a day on weekends. And he credits a lot of his success to his dad, who really helped him decide what to study. His favorite memory of the trip was standing up on stage with the other finalists because he'd watched it on TV before, and it was really exciting to actually be the one up there. And out of all the places in the world he'd most liked to visit, he chose Antarctica because his dad's been there and because of all the interesting animals, because he'd like to be a marine biologist. So, we'd like to congratulate him.[192.15][192.15][applause] And do you have any family members in the audience? Your dad, would you please stand up?[207.26][207.26][applause] Are all of our students here? Kevin? Okay, all right. We are going to recognize three students from Olathe Northwest, and we're really happy that one of them, Aaron Wagner, was able to be here. I think the other two might be on vacation. And their sponsor, their instructor, Kevin Holson, and principal, Dr. Gwen Pos. Three students from Northwest recently took top honors at the National Conference of the Technology Student Association in Dallas. The mission of TSA is to inspire students to prepare for careers in a technology-driven economy. With more than 5,000 students competing at the conference, Aaron, who recently graduated from Olathe Northwest, placed third in the career comparisons competition. To achieve this, she had to fill out a resume with all of her academic and technology experience, and in the finals, she participated in an interview with several judges as if she were applying for a job in the field of technology. Caleb Hoagland and Alex Donald, both seniors at Northwest this fall, finished fourth in the Technology Challenge Competition. And their task was to design a Rube Goldberg device to keep a billiard ball in constant motion for at least 90 seconds, using fluid in their design within a two-foot cubed area. Well, they surpassed the 90-second requirement by clocking in at 129.12 seconds. These students are our future, and they are inspiring us to look ahead with confidence. Congratulations on an outstanding achievement.[312.08][312.08][applause]
Laurlee, I'd like to add that Aaron is attending Wichita State University in the Aerospace and Engineering Program. She's a mentor at Honeywell, and she has just completed her solo flying and has done some night flying already.
Great.
And do you have any family members here?
I have my mom.
Mom, would you stand up? Now, we'd like to recognize Rhonda O'Connor, early childhood disabilities teacher at Ridgeview Elementary. And although he couldn't be with us tonight, we're also going to recognize Steve Ingram, who's a phys ed teacher and coach at Olathe South High School. These two individuals are both recipients of Character Awards from the Character Council of Olathe this year. And I don't know if you can see it, but Rhonda's holding her Character Award, which is pretty impressive. She received the Character Award in the category of Education. She works with students with disabilities at Ridgeview Elementary School and actually received a nomination from one of her students, didn't she? And she exemplifies the district's guiding principles, continually looking for ways to help her students mature. With great tolerance, energy, and enthusiasm, she serves her students with a great smile and a warm heart. Stephen Ingram received the Character Award in the category of Sports. He's a longtime outstanding coach and teacher, a role model for his students who keeps promises, doesn't make excuses, exhibits self-control, and always does his best. From him, students see a clear example of honesty and integrity. We're so fortunate to have individuals of this caliber in our district community. Rhonda, did you bring any fans? And our final recognition is for Gary Deener, Executive Director of Business and Finance, and Randy Otting, Business Analyst, for the Meritorious Budget Award. This is the ninth year in a row that the Olathe School District has received the Meritorious Budget Award from the Association of School Business Officials International. The Meritorious Budget Award is the highest form of recognition in budgeting for school entities, and it's only earned after comprehensive review by a panel of independent budget professionals using extensive criteria. The credit for achieving this distinguished record goes to Gary Deener, who is our District Business and Finance Director, and Randy Otting, District Budget Analyst, who are responsible for preparing the budget document, which was cited for clarity, accuracy, and accessibility. The record of nine consecutive awards is unmatched by any other district in the state. We'd like to say congratulations on a job well done.[515.04][515.04][applause]
Congratulations to all of you. We are a few minutes ahead of our public comments time board, so if you would indulge me, I will jump a little bit in the agenda, take care of a few items, and then we'll come back to that and our consent agenda. If you'll move to action items. Item number 7.05 relates to setting our meeting place for the special August 17 meeting with the City of Olathe. And we've been informed by the city they would like to meet at the Health Ridge Fitness And this would be an item that we do need to take action on, correct, Dr. All or Betty? Thank you. If there's no objection, we had planned to do it originally here, but for purpose of notifying the public, we'll need to take action on this recommendation. So, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the recommendation from the City of Olathe to have our joint City Council and Board of Education meeting on Thursday, August 17, 6:00 PM, at Health Ridge Fitness Center at 17-800-WEST-106STREET, Olathe.
Thank you, Ms. Ashley.
Second?
Second by Mr. Poland. Any discussion? Mrs. Carpenter.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
And that motion carries. Thank you. If you'll move to Agenda Item 8, Future Action Items. I think it'll take a few minutes to ask if there are any questions related to the items that are in the Future Action Items area. Family and Consumer Sciences textbooks, potential of the Old Walnut Grove, one-room schoolhouse relocation, the Cronos Custom Software, architectural engineering fee proposals for elementary number 33. Mr. Parker?
I did have some questions in regards to the Cronos Custom Software. I remember that, I think in April of 2005, I believe that the board made the decision to buy the software from Cronos. That was going to be the end of all ends to manage our staff time and clocking in or everything that needs to be done in the area of compensation. And yet, now we find out that apparently it's not working or it's inadequate. So, what I need to know, what I'd like to know is, is this the solution that we need and is this going to be the final solution?
I think that's a good question. Mr. Parker, we did extensive work in the beginning to try to identify a company that could provide not only the software, that provided the application features that we were looking for, but also would meet the climate issues that we were dealing with, that we have within our organization that we wanted to be able to maintain.
Could you talk a little bit about those? You know, I guess I need to know why we have currently is not adequate, is not filling the bill, and if this is going to be a solution, so why, what makes it so unique?
Well, that takes us back to the whole discussion of Fair Labor Standard Acts, and depending on how much you want to go into that this evening, but the whole requirement of Fair Labor Standard Acts of how you work, how an organization works with its classified staff or non-exempt staff, and the paying of overtime for those situations and for the work habits. You have a very broad question, and I'm going to try to be as succinct as possible without going into the reports that were generated over the last two years that were quite extensive. So, I'll do my best here. The expectations of Fair Labor Standard Act are an attempt to make sure that all organizations are treating their employees fairly and ensuring that they are paid adequately, on time, and making sure that they're paid for any overtime that they have. One of the issues that we have in our district that is, that we're finding is very, very unique in the business world, is that we have staff that work in multiple locations for multiple tasks at different rates for multiple supervisors. And while many organizations have different jobs that they might assign to certain individuals, that kind of breadth of complexity is something that Cronos has not seen. And while we believe that we dealt and we tried very hard to make sure that they understood that in the beginning, the actual application of that is something that we're finding over about the last seven months of discussion. And I would say that over the last seven months, they have made a lot of progress in the development of the software and the programming that we believe is going to meet our needs. What we're working on right now is making sure that the software not only meets the intent of what we're trying to accomplish, so that we can meet Fair Labor Standard Act expectations, but also that it's user-friendly enough that our staff can actually use it in a way in which it's a tool that is useful and user-friendly and not just an added responsibility for them. Just simply one example, right now, it's relatively easy for our staff in the buildings to look over timesheets, and they have them in their hand, as many paper processes do. And they can check them over, they can make sure that so-and-so really was there for last Thursday night's basketball ticket-taking collection process, or they can make sure that they were there at the cross-country meet, they were the timer, or that they did accomplish a task for, that a stipend was being paid for. Any of those kinds of things we're talking about, they can see it on paper, and they can mark it off and send it and submit it to payroll for payment. One of the things through automation that we're trying to make sure that we can accomplish is that now that that's online, now that that's on a screen, that they can actually see that and only see what they need to see to approve. And that's one of the biggest complexities that we've run against with the package that Cronos currently has, their standard package, is that it will provide the information on individuals to our supervisors, but it's not in a user-friendly method. It's all the information about a particular individual that then a supervisor would have to sift through pages and pages to find the one item that they might have to approve. That's sort of one example of the kinds of things that are expectations before we implement it to our staff, that we would like to have implemented and taken care of upfront before it's put out into the system. Because we know that any time-in-attendance system is going to have an impact on any organization. We're now asking staff to do something that they haven't done before. And sometimes that can be a very sensitive issue for people, and we want to be cognizant of that. And in doing so, we want to make sure that it's implemented as smoothly and seamlessly as possible with the least amount of interruption as to their normal day.
So, if we, if Nick Smith, if we approve this custom software, that's going to solve all of our problems forever?
I don't believe that I would never make that promise, but I would say that we have --
For the near future?
In the near future. We've, I can say that we have had a tremendous number of discussions, trying to find ways to work around our expectations with what their program can do or what we can do with our changes in the way in which we do business that might better adapt it to how the program works. And we've come down to these items that we feel just simply are necessary. The list started much larger than this, and we've accommodated it through other kinds of changes, but this is what we've come down to, yes. And yes, I believe that this will take us into the foreseeable future.
I noticed in the report that it says they're still in a negotiating stage for the custom work?
Yes.
So, this is, it could, this number is subject to change?
I think this is the largest it will be. I put in a few extra hours in there to cover ourselves. We, it's still one of those things that that's, notice it says "do not exceed." We believe that it'll actually come in less than that based on the hours that are going to be necessary.
All right. I don't want to belabor the point, and I appreciate you taking your time to explain it, but I think it's important that this is going to solve the problem.
Yeah.
And we know it's going to solve the problem, and I think that's incumbent upon Cronos to be sure that they deliver that.
Yes. We feel very strongly in the same way.
Mr. Deener, I agree with Mr. Parker. I would like to ask some additional questions. Did we have an original requirements definition or statement of work or whatever you might call that?
Get this over here so I can see you. Yes, we did. It was a very extensive RFP. One of the things that was difficult about the RFP, though, was that this is, this was a brand-new project for us. We had no expertise on our staff as far as the ability to know all of the complexities that might be involved with the time-in-attendance system, and so that's why we sent out an RFP. And to be honest, we made it very general in many, in many cases. In retrospect, we probably should have spent some additional dollars, come to the board and asked for additional dollars for a more extensive upfront analysis that the selected company, Cronos or whatever company we would have gone with, could have come and sit down and gone through perhaps two weeks of analysis of what we really need and what we really expect to see in the end, so that they could have come to a better analysis for the professional services necessary for us to get there. That's the biggest glitch of where we're at, is the time that it's being required from Cronos's part to be able to do all of the adjustments to how we do business. I would say that Cronos, as difficult as it's sometimes been in trying to help them understand our expectations and that, no, we're not going to ban on certain things, we simply can't ban the way we do things to the way your software provides the program. They have spent a tremendous number of hours, and they have written off a tremendous number of hours. And so, from their standpoint, we also have to be cognizant, although we did an RFP, they got into a situation that I think was not quite like their salespeople told their contracting staff. And so, I mean, it's, it's been a difficult --
Always blaming it on salespeople.[1241.08][1241.08][laughter] Just a little tongue-in-cheek there.
I understand. It's --
Mike and I hear that all the time.[1249.15][1249.15][laughter]
It's been difficult, and, but we're working through it, and we believe that this is going to help us reach the goals we're looking for and the objectives that we're trying to accomplish.
I trust your judgment, Mr. Deener. I guess it's just disturbing to me that Cronos, not having been a part of the conversations, I guess I'm curious as to what they foresee their liability in making this work. And one thing that I personally bristle at is a sales team's representation that's then not followed up by an operations team's. And I just think it's incumbent upon them to do that. That being said, it certainly will anxiously await the revised statement of work, so to speak. And I, did we just buy a license from them, or did we buy an ongoing maintenance obligation from them as well?
In the package, we have a five-year maintenance agreement with them that will provide us all the upgrades that they have in maintenance and services with that.
So, I guess the question back to them is why wouldn't this qualify under those? Simply if it's in the form of enhancements or whatever it takes to get a suitable product here for the district, I just have a struggle with it, and I guess would like some more clarity around that.
Thank you, Mr. Deener. Mr. Churchman, anybody else? On that item or any other item on the future actions list?
Just one other question on the Old Walnut Grove relocation. I assume, Dr. All, that, I know that some of our schools use that for special events, and they'll be able to continue to do that, or is it still conducive to them doing that in an alternate location?
Mr. Martin is here, and he can add to my comments, but what I, the report I got from him is that that is located on the Walnut Grove school site. The building has no access, immediate access to restrooms. A few of our third-grade classes use it, but there's not staff there from the city to support that. And by relocating it to the Mahaffey area, that would provide it in sort of a complex of Olathe's history. The educational access, I believe, will actually be significantly enhanced, and Earl can ask, address more. Earl's our Director of Elementary Education.
Dr. Hyne and I have had some conversations about, actually, if we could move this facility to Mahaffey, it would add a lot more accessibility to the facility there, because they would be able to build into that particular building some restroom facilities. And I'm not sure, does it even have utilities there right now? Yeah, it doesn't have utilities. So, it's usability right now is extremely limited on the, on the site that --
The educator that is referred to in one letter helped me understand what that educator's function would be.
Well, that's the second part of this. I think in that letter, the first part is moving the school, and I think the costs and all the, of that would be worked out to be taken care of by others, not us. We're just, and I think our staff would like to see the school probably be moved. The second piece of that is the, a past discussion when there was some work done to enhance Mahaffey as a historic area. And there was some discussion, I think, between the school district, the city, and others, and maybe the Mahaffey Board, about placing, once they got their infrastructure up and their new enhancements to their facilities, to place an actual educator there that would then take our field trips and our students. And Dr. Hyne is not here tonight, but she has a lot more details about that, and Earl may have that as well. That was not, that was more of a verbal commitment. I have not a lot of detail about that, and I had, that is still very much on the table for discussion. That's not something in the near future. I think if they got everything done, they would like to have some support in the fall of 2007, but I haven't even had a chance to have a face-to-face with Earl or Jan. And Earl, you can add some additional information if you're --
Again, in our earlier discussions about possibly moving to Mahaffey to make it more available as a field trip site for some of our students, we had talked about even really building it into our social studies curriculum with Grade III and Olathe History and that kind of thing. And right now, there's a number of really exciting programs that do take place at Mahaffey with some staffing that they've provided and some collaboration with the school district in terms of some programming at the elementary level as well as other levels as well. And if we could move that and really utilize it for our Olathe history kind of program, particularly as it connects with third grade, we had talked about some collaboration with an educator that might help facilitate that. And honestly, I don't have the information on the funding of that either, but we wanted to kind of collaborate with the city in terms of helping to develop some programming for that to take place.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Martin. Mrs. Carpenter, do we have anyone signed up for public comments?
No, I do not.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board in the public comments Seeing none, we'll dispense with the public comments and move on to our consent agenda. Section 5 of our agenda. I'd like to ask that item 5.05, dealing with financial depositories for 2006-07, be pulled from the consent agenda and dealt with separately. Is there anything else that a board member would like to see pulled off and discussed separately or voted on separately?
I have some brief clarifying questions on change orders.
Mr. Churchman, go ahead.
Mr. Thompson, if you could just give me an overview as to the changes that Regency placed that have resulted in the change orders we've seen, and then also, if you could just give an overview as to, are we on time for completion there?
The easiest way to explain the change order is that in order to expedite construction, we went ahead and went out to bid without a final building permit, which meant without final comments from the city staff to our architects. There have been some, without offering excuses, there have been some changes in personnel within the city government system, and that process has slowed considerably in recent weeks and months. So, we made the decision to stay on course, that we were close enough to what we could get a building permit for, that we went on out to bid. After we had received bids, obviously, then our prices were locked in, there were some comments that came from the city, code enforcement people, that had to be addressed in order to get a building permit, most of that having to do with fire rating of some exterior windows, existing windows and some doors. And that's why the bulk of the cost is in carpentry. But there was a list of eight or nine items that came from the city that were review comments that we had to take care of before we could get our building permit. And unfortunately, we do that regularly, where we go ahead and think we're close enough, and we go out to bid so that we can keep the process rolling, so that we don't have to wait for bureaucracy to catch up with us. In this case, $26,000 is a lot because of the size, but that's not, you know, an insurmountable amount. As far as schedule, we're very tight. It was a very tight project going in. I don't know how to put this any other way, that when we accept low bids, which public organizations have to, sometimes you get a very good team of contractors, and sometimes you get some folks who aren't as good. We had a contractor on their project who was critical, site excavation. We had a water line and a sewer line that had to be relocated before we could start work, and it didn't get moved as quickly as it could have. Since then, the other contractors on the project have done an extremely good job, and we're back to a schedule. We'll have it completed, we'll have the classrooms completed before school starts. We're not, we're not going to teach painting and carpet laying the first day of school. We'll be further along than that, but it'll be very close. We've been working with the principal and the custodian, and I think we're in good shape. The actual flex space, the area that was designed as a flexible space, may follow into the first or second week of school before we're space, may follow into the first or second week of school before we're completely through there. But I was just there this afternoon. We will have four classrooms before school starts, but it will be very close to when school starts.
Okay, thank you.
That's all. Thank you, Mr. Churchman. Anyone else? If not, a motion would be in order to approve the consent agenda except for item 5.05.
Would move for approval of the consent agenda with the exception of item 5.05.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ashley. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
And our consent agenda is approved. Moving back to, before we get to item 5.05, which I will be excusing myself due to a conflict of interest on that item, wanted to talk for a minute. One of our objectives as a board is to be as transparent as possible in our activities and our deliberations, particularly when it comes to the financial affairs of the district. And on this particular item, we've had a number of questions. Dr. All has received a number of questions from board members regarding process and procedure and reporting, which have been very legitimate questions. And to that end, she's also made some recommendations in working with Randy Otting of our staff to improve our process and improve our reporting in this area. And I'd like to ask Dr. All if she would just give a brief overview of those recommended changes and also advise the board that our legal counsel, Mr. Mike Norris, is present tonight. If we come up with a question that requires his expertise, we can ask a question of him. And then after we have this discussion, I'll be excusing myself. And Ms. Ashley's indicated she'll be excusing herself, leaving you in the capable hands of Mrs. Wilhelm to deal with this issue. So with that, Dr. All.
First of all, you know, it's, I believe, been the board's intent that procedures are in place to ensure, first of all, that our taxpayers continue to receive the highest interest rates possible on all idle funds that are invested that meet all Kansas statutes and board policies. And as Mr. Gilmore indicated, to be transparent to the public about any transactions that involve any entity for which a board member is employed or holds substantial interest. So with those two balancing pieces in mind, what I prepared based on input from all board members is some steps that I think the board could consider in moving forward that would help not only on this particular specific topic, but the big picture of working towards being very transparent and also having a deeper understanding of how funds are invested in this district. First of all, as a reminder, currently eligible financial institutions, eligible means consistent with state law, the financial stability to handle our funds and have indicated an interest, those funds are on a bid basis. The status of funds deposited in all institutions are included in each monthly board packet. And this format includes the names of the institutions, the amount deposited, transacted, and maturity dates. So that's been a part of our established procedures that each board member gets. So we know on a month-to-month basis where those funds are. As an enhancement, I'm suggesting that the board receive with that monthly report some modification that more clearly identify an addition, subtractions, or monthly activity. And that the transactions would be with an annotation or note or a category that would identify them as for purchase or maturity. I'm also suggesting that as an additional step, that two board members be appointed by the board to review those investment transactions each month. If any institution for which a member of the board is employed secures the highest interest rate, then the board, the entire board, would receive a report from Mr. Otting identifying all the institutions that did bid and the rates that they offered to inform the board and to document that the highest rate was indeed taken for our district. So that would happen in those cases. And then additionally, as we've discussed in terms of making sure that there is really public notice that all financial institutions that meet the opportunity and interest to bid on Olathe School District idle funds, that we will annually put a notice in our local papers that indicate that we are open to any interested financial institutions because keeping, as I'm talking with Mr. Otting, a broad base of financial institutions that will bid on our funds is in the best interest of our investment opportunities. In addition, it's recommended that, and this is something that was actually coming parallel here at the same time, but it happens to fit in very nicely, it is recommended that the board review our current financial services, the processes, and develop the next financial services, working bank services, RFP. Mr. Randy Otting would lead this committee. And the recommendation that we would have two appointed board members and then other financial staff or expertise as needed. The board is in its last year of its RFP with First National Bank of Kansas as the working bank. And we need to address that particular aspect of this. But in going as a first step, is this would give us an opportunity to review all these processes. And I believe that we'll find those processes are functioning very well, but there might be opportunities for improvement or enhancement. And so it gives us an opportunity to do both of those. We've done this practice very successfully in the back, in the past, when we've had two board members sit with the study group with Mr. Deener, you know, when we went through our Laidlaw Financial, Laidlaw Services and on our recent broker services. And so this is a model we've used it for. And I think it's been a very helpful model that we've used the last few years. And this would be an opportunity to do it. And then finally, the board may want to direct the superintendent, working with our legal counsel, to take any ideas and suggestions given to develop a possible amendment to current policy that would reflect the process for these additional safeguards. And maybe a generalized process that would help define safeguards for any entity for which a board member is employed or holds a substantial interest as defined by Kansas statutes and the current Board of Education policy on conflict of interest. So if that would be of the board's interest, then I would work with the board's attorney, Mike Norris, and Scott Mason, our within-house assistants, and come back, taking that input and reviewing our policy and making sure that we're aligning all of this together so that we can continue to make sure that all board members, as well as the public, is very informed about not only what the potential conflicts might be and how they're being addressed. So those are some thoughts that I put together based on all of our input and discussions that I'd just like to present back and back to the board for discussion or questions.
Dr. All, I have some perspective to give on what you said. I look back over the year that I've spent on this board. And I look at things such as public comments, community conversations, even board docs. And what those really all roll up to, in my mind, is just a continued proactive effort for transparency by Dr. All and her staff and by this board. And I think this is another example of that. In my opinion, the district will do business with companies that employ members of this board. I think to have any other view would be a misguided expectation. I do believe, however, that when there are those instances when board members are involved, when their companies are in front of us for potential interactions, that they will recuse themselves. That's gone on in the past. We've heard here tonight that two board members will do the same. I think what the public should expect, however, is that they will recuse themselves and that we will be transparent and that we will make sure that when we interact with those companies, it's done on an unbiased basis, an open basis, a competitive basis, and one that doesn't put the taxpayer or the people that support this district at risk or in an unfair position. I compliment Dr. All and her staff for what I consider to be a very proactive proposal. And this isn't something that just developed overnight. I've listened to all the board members here and participated with them in making the recommendations to really frame this up. And so I compliment not only the board, but Dr. All and her staff on this.
Mr. Parker?
I certainly agree with Mr. Churchman and would recommend that we would continue moving forward with this because these are very positive steps. And I appreciate all of the input on behalf of all the board members in this regard. And I know Mr. Churchman has given us a great deal of input on this and I appreciate that and his thought on this as well. And this is a real positive step for us. And it's a good step. And it's something that we should have thought of and done before. And we hadn't. And so, from that aspect, it's very appropriate and very important that we go ahead and get this accomplished.
To that extent, I would like to see the policy revised. And I would like the community to know that this district is going to do business with companies that employ these board members. And they're going to do it in a manner that's appropriate. And let's make sure that we clearly state what that process will be.
Thank you, Mr. Churchman. Anyone else? Mr. Poland?
I think it's incumbent on us that we elevate the standard by which we operate. And I think this is an appropriate step to do that. We've referred many times to students prepared for the future. And if we don't lead the way by our example, then we're failing our students. And I think this is a very, very appropriate step. So I appreciate the hard work that everybody has put into it. Dr. All?
I think it would be important to say that nothing inappropriate has happened in the past. This is just a step. It's like being ready for an emergency. And I really appreciate the idea of two board members being a part of that on a monthly basis to see, internally, for us to look at that process. I know we have the opportunity to see it. We see the results. We don't see the process. This allows us to see the process, to be a part of the bid process, to understand that. And I trust that we've always accepted the highest bid. But this just ensures that there's two other sets of eyes that are looking at that to be sure that happens. So this is just insurance.
Came back to that.
To be sure that we are being, taking this responsibility seriously as a board member.
And I want to second that. I couldn't agree more. And the importance of this, what the public will now see and what the board will see is where all the cash is, when it changes locations, why it's changed location. And that will be open for discussion. This has never been about anything having happened wrongful in the past, but it's just another step, as Mr. Parker indicated and Mr. Poland indicated, at making this more visible. And I think that's a good thing. And I would like to be a part of that RFP process.
Well, that was my next comment. Please let Dr. All and myself know if you have an interest in serving in any of these capacities. And we'll have her move forward with legal counsel on some of these recommendations and bring that back to you in the future.
I would like to see possibly just a thought about a rotation of those responsibilities so that we all have the opportunity to serve. I think it is a learning opportunity for us. And so we may look at, although it may mean that we work a little harder and dig a little deeper in that rotation process, I do think it would be important for all of us to be involved in one way or another.
And I would recommend in looking at that rotation, that we do it on a quarterly basis. And that way, I think it would be more instructional for board members to see two or three months in sequence and then rotate two more board members in for the next quarter. Just so, I don't think one month at a time. Randy's going to spend all of his time explaining everything. And this way, there'd be some continuity to it.
I'll bring you back some options. Those are good thoughts. My, I've been through my rotation with Randy. And so I cannot do his job, though, I can tell you. And I told him recently, I will not take Randy Otting for granted any longer because he does significant important work for this district. And I think that's what's exciting about this, is that we're going, and you're going to see what he does and how hard he works to make sure that every dollar gets invested, even for a few days at a time. He lets no idle fund stay idle. And so I think you're going to see that. And that's just a side benefit of all of this. And it helped me to learn a little bit more. And I'm looking forward to that as well. So we're in good hands, but I think these are additional steps that just will help create that understanding. And with that understanding will come confidence in the process, so.
As far as the RFP process goes, it would be my hope that this board would agree to have one of the two banking experts that we've got on this board to participate in that and to bring that expertise to the process as well.
And I'd be willing to do that.
Great, thank you. Well, in accordance with our board policy and Kansas statutes, I'm declaring a conflict with respect to item 5.05 regarding financial depositories. And we'll be recusing myself from the discussion and voting. Ms. Ashley's informed me she'll be doing the same. And so with that, we're going to leave it in your hands, Ms. Wilhelm.
With these enhancements in place, let's move forward. Is there further discussion from the board concerning financial depositories?
I would just ask, and I know Dr. All's planning to do so, that you just bring back a proposal or timeline from us. I know that a revision to policy needs to be done properly and it takes some time. So if, once you have a feel for that, if you could just set our expectation.
My hope would be that by later than the September board meeting, you would have a draft. If I can work to move something sooner, just to get some individual feedback, I will. But that, if that timeline's appropriate for the board, that would help me a little bit too, because, you know, with school opening. But I think I've got enough information here that I can give enough guidance to some others to begin working parallel on this. So if that would meet your expectations, I think we need to move forward on it. And then the process for the committee, we'll gather those interest names and then I'll come back with some options. If we, if you support the rotation basis, you can approve that the next time. Or if you want another kind of option there, I'll give that to you. And then all that can be done and we can be off and going. The other thing that I would say in August is, again, you know, the monthly report, including tonight, is there what the cash balances are of July 30. And one thing that's kind of interesting, they continue to go down because these are the balances that make payroll. And then our next infusion of dollars come in January. So any, anyone who feels like they would like to meet with Mr. Otting prior or during this month, that's always an open opportunity for any board member. And I just wouldn't want you to think you have to delay on that to wait for an actual schedule to be done. So again, I'll move as quickly as I can to address the things that I put together.
Any other discussion? Is there a motion subject to the changes that Dr. All has recommended for this, moving ahead for the financial depositories?
I would move that we would approve and accept the list of financial depositories as presented by, on the list in Consent Agenda 5.05 for the year 2006-07.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mrs. Carpenter, would you call the role, please?
Ms. Ashley? Oh, she's, sorry. Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Wilhelm?
Yes. Motion passed. Would you please ask our other two board members to return?
Thank you. Mrs. Wilhelm?
Mr. Gilmore, I'd like to make one comment.
Yes, sir.
You know, we don't have the opportunity to say this very often publicly, but I just want to state publicly that this has been a very difficult issue for the board because we, and we've worked really, really hard, every board member has. But I want to especially compliment the leadership and the patience and the care that Dr. All is showing in this issue. It has been outstanding. And Dr. All has just, you have done an incredible job bringing us together on this issue. And thank you very much.
I'd like to second that.
Thanks to all of you. It was a pleasure to work with each of you. And I felt an opportunity of everyone working together and getting everybody's ideas on the table and all of the different perspectives. And I think we've come as a team with individual perspectives to a better place than what we anticipated. And that's what a high-performing team does. So I thank all of you on that.
But we need a leader to get us there.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you all for those comments. Thank you, Dr. All. We are on bids, contracts, and agreements, section six of our agenda. And unless there are questions, we can entertain a motion to approve all of these items. a motion to approve all of these items.
I did have a couple of questions.
Mrs. Wilhame, go ahead.
On the science room additions at Olathe East and Olathe South, is it typical, and I probably should know this, but I'm going to ask, typical that we have just two approved firms for those proposals?
It has been typically typical in the last bond issue. This is not a bond project. It's a capital outlay project, but we just follow the same procedure. We could certainly follow any course that you would recommend. These are the two architects that we have been using in this bond issue, and that's why we turned to them.
Second question on that, does the fee, that fee and then does not include the survey? So, that's added on to what that fee is? Is that correct?
Survey would be added on to that. The reason it was worried that way is there's some debate as to whether a survey's even needed. Those are areas that we've, they're very small areas. You can almost make a visual survey of just walking out there and determining the grades. So, the reason it was excluded is there's some debate as to whether there's even a survey needed. I don't believe so.
Okay. Other question on the addition to the service center, is that the cost, am I understanding that what we're seeing is the cost for the proposal that they're putting together?
That is for the architectural engineering services to produce the drawings.
Okay. And when will we have a cost for that addition?
That would be, we would expect the design firm to give us an estimate as a part of their design. Then the final cost would be obviously when we bid. But we would expect as a part of their design process to be an estimate for that.
To be.
We ourselves have produced an estimate. There was $500,000 in the bond issue set aside for that project. With inflation, we're estimating $700,000 at this point.
Okay.
But the architects, as a part of their design, will provide us with an estimate based upon what they see in the design.
Okay.
Mr. Thompson, what is our long-term plan for the service center? Is it intended to be there in its location for the foreseeable future?
To my knowledge, yes. I have not heard of any discussion to move it elsewhere. I don't know that specifically. At the same time, I don't know that I've heard of a long-range plan that says it's going to be there forever. It's certainly a facility that's in good condition. It meets the needs. It certainly meets the needs from a maintenance point of view. It has an office shortage right now of office personnel.
Okay. And if I could revert back to the science lab for a moment, what are our alternatives there? May not be good ones, but what are alternatives?
I can tell you what I know about the circumstance. There've been several people that worked on this. This came to me as a project, as a construction project after it had been reviewed by TNL and Mr. Houghton and Mr. Lilis in the maintenance department who had reviewed those issues of alternatives. I can tell you that it is our understanding that there are not spaces within those buildings that could be renovated to serve as science rooms. In other words, there's not an empty room that we could make into a science room for these. Other than that, I would have to rely upon TNL and Mr. Houghton to give you the options that they looked at before it came to me as a construction project.
And Dr. All, just in order to understand the whole scenarios, what's the class size that we have in these current labs? Number of students?
Well, for example, in science, it's going to be limited by the number of lab stations that we have, ideally limited by the number of lab stations we have. And I can't tell you, I don't have the data with me to say what those actual class sizes are, but they would vary depending on the level of the course. Dr. Banakowski, you have any thoughts you want to offer, or Dr. Sanders?
Certainly, we have Carol Williamson, our science coordinator here, who has been integral, involved in looking at what our needs would be to meet the new state requirements for the additional high school graduation requirement, the type of science that needs to be provided, and the type of room that that would be provided in. So, we might bring Mrs. Williamson up here, and she was a little farther back there than I was wishing there for a moment. But she could talk a little bit about the fact that certainly as a school district, we would explore alternative sites. Both of those schools are using so much of their current sites. It's not like there are empty classrooms waiting to just have some refurbishing done to them. So, Carol, you just might add some additional details.
At those two schools, particularly this new third, this new science requirement, many of our students are completing more than the two required sciences they need for graduation. But starting with the class of 2009, all students will need to. So, in meeting this third science requirement for every student, we currently have maxed out labs. We have 12 teachers and 11 classrooms at those two schools, 12 science teachers. So, they're already using the off-hours in those classrooms, and their classroom, class sizes are full. For example, at, just one example, at Olathe East, there's some electives they would like to offer in science but haven't been able to because their teachers and their class sizes are just, their hours are filled up. So, they can't offer some of those electives. So, right now, you would say they are maxed out. And then, when we add that additional requirement, that's going to mean more students in the science hallway needing science classes and for them to continue with a lab-based, active science situation, we'll just need more space.
And so, then, in addition to infrastructure, we'll be hiring additional teachers, is that right? Or is that not right?
That's my understanding, yes.
And we've planned for that, is that correct?
We have certainly put it on the initiative sheet as something. We've talked about it since we've knew about, known about the requirement. We've looked at the data of how many students we'd have to accommodate in the future. And we certainly had that discussion with members of certainly facilities at the table, service center, as well as human resources of that need that is going to be coming down for. In a sense, an unfunded mandate, and something that we spoke to the state board about at that time. But it is a requirement, and we need to provide that for our students. So, we have certainly had that on the table. And it will be a challenge because, of course, science teachers are not always readily available. So, we'll have to be planning accordingly.
Please, I'll go ahead.
I was just going to add one comment here. You know, just as a piece about how we staff our high schools, for example, we have a certain number of students. They enroll in a certain number of classes. What this does is, and then, we staff based on the elective process. That makes also, assuming we have a minimum number. What's a little harder here is that it may, it will force shift some students out of certain electives. They may be spread over many, many different choices because they have to take a science class then, and we would encourage it their junior year because we don't like to see them post graduation requirements if they, at all possible, till they're senior, but they wouldn't have to do it then. And what will happen is that there will be a number of science sections that will have to be added and staffed. What that exactly looks like, you know, we're going to have to look at our coursework and exact enrollment. It puts some stress on us, but I don't want you to think we can't deal with this. We can deal with it. We will deal with it. We will have the staff in place because it'll just be part of one of the things that we have to do, just like we have to do for other things. The problem is, it's not that we take 100 more kids and put them in science, and therefore, you can reduce, because you have to have those sections. And those 100 all come from one place. They may be spread out, two or three not taking art, two or three not taking theater, two or three not taking a vocal music class. And you really don't get the efficiency of staffing to offset the new costs. So, it'll be a factor, but it's, you know, we deal with so many factors of growth that I think we can work through this, but we will be prepared on it.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we've made budgetary provisions for the staff that we'll need.
Yeah. It'll be in next year's budget.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Dr. Banakowski, is there not also another piece tied to that? And that's the NCLB and the requirements that are coming onboard with science?
Certainly, as we look forward to Kansas Science Assessments, it'll be important for us to provide the best quality science education with this third course. Mrs. Williamson's been working very diligently with that. So, yes, it is linked with No Child Left Behind and the adequate yearly progress that we're going to be looking at related to Kansas Science Assessments.
And isn't our other initiative with Kaufman on the math and science tied right into that?
Tied right into it. All of those pieces of the puzzle really focus on what we're wanting to do, and that is to provide really advanced, rigorous curriculum opportunities for all students in the area of math and science.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Pollan?
I just need to understand the one sentence here, an additional Olathe North that does not have enough labs equipped for increasing chemistry enrollment, which requires a room to be refurbished. Does that mean we're refurbishing one at Olathe North?
I think Mr. Thomas can answer that one.
What we will include within the construction documents is a drawing, is a bid alternate for work at Olathe North. What we've tried to do within the funds allocated to us is prioritize the additions to South and East as a first priority, renovation of a science room at North as a bid alternate if there are funds available. If they're not, that does give us then a firm price so that we could look for funds for that room if that was the, if that was the choice. So, we'll be putting a Olathe North in as a bid. And the reason we did that is because it is already a science room. It's just not a chemistry lab, which would be more beneficial to them. It's a general-purpose science room.
Okay. Thank you. If there are no other questions, would someone like to make a motion?
I will so move that we approve all of the bids, contracts, and agreements as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Churchman.
Second.
Mr. Parker, was that you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter?
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Turning to Section 7 of our agenda, we have budget development under action items, budget development, publication of budgets, public hearing to deal with. And Mr. Deener, welcome.
Good evening.
We're anxious to hear from an award winner.
That's on written documentation. This evening, we're getting closer to the end of the process of developing and approving a budget. And at this point in time, this evening, we're bringing to you the first document that actually will be an official document to be published. Before we go into that, I think it's important, though, to maybe take a real quick review of what has taken place and what brought us to this point in time. The public needs to understand that there have been budget discussions throughout the last six months. And during all of that time, questions have been asked, and we've been trying to help the public understand that they are part of this process. Media information has been distributed, not only from our community relations, but also the coverage that has been provided by our local media representatives. Preliminary budget information was provided in May and June. At that time, it was a little more, less, it was more sketchy than what it has been in the past simply because of the timing this year of the process and the availability of information that was available to us to actually make a good presentation at those times. We were able to have a budget workshop this last Thursday evening, and we had, I think that we had nice attendance, of which people asked some very good questions, and I think that we had a nice dialogue, and I think that that went very well. And I appreciate the board supporting that, and I would suggest that we continue to do that and provide that opportunity in the future. And then, right now, the board has already suggested that we have the public hearing for August the 16th, and what we're going to now look at is what that information might look like. Before we go any further, though, we'd like to remind the board that we had a very good discussion at our last meeting on the budget process, cash balances, what we're looking for in a budget, balancing fiscal responsibility with cash balances. And at that time, the board came to a consensus, at least that's what we feel we heard, that we should look at a three-mil reduction. And so, regardless of what we talk about as far as the actual document for the notice of hearing, the operating budget that we're working on will reflect a three-mil reduction. And so, the official document itself reflects a .5-mil reduction. And that is because that document needs to reflect the maximum authority that this board might ever want to consider. And so, that provides us a little bit of coverage in case anything, any opinions, any thoughts change over the process. But it's still our intent to provide the board with an operating budget that has a three-mil reduction. As we look at the notice of hearing, that document itself is going to provide different information. It provides all the information that is relative to the actual official state budget documents. I'm not going to go into detail of each one of the items there. I think you can peruse those. It's simply to say that it's an official document that is by statute, needs to be approved by every Board of Education of the state of Kansas, published in the local paper, and followed with at least 10 days after that with a public hearing, an opportunity for the public to respond to it. The operating budget that we're going to be working with is one that's going to cover various entities, dealing with enrollment growth, maintaining per pupil class sizes that the community has come to expect. It's opening a new early childhood center, Harmony, provides for compensation and benefits, and targeted employment for our bilingual education and some other special needs programs. It also provides for No Child Left Behind and our state accreditation requirements, health and dental increases, increases for utilities. And also, it provides some allocation increases due to some reductions that were made about four or five years ago, that we're trying to work our way back up to providing those resources to our classrooms. Looking at the operating funds, and now, at this point in time, I'd like to just focus on six funds, the six funds that deal with the levy funds. The general fund, supplemental general fund, which we right now have identified as using 30% authority, which is the maximum legal authority, extraordinary growth, which is set at 100% authority, capital outlay fund, which would be set at five mils, which is currently what it is right now, noticing that the authority is, the option for the board is up to 14 and 1/2 mils, bond and interest and special assessments, which are set basically just on what they need to be set to provide for the funding necessary to make those payments. A quick review of the mil levies, the total mil levies over the last, well, I guess, since 1991-92, and to give us some perspective of what we're looking at. And right now, if we look at the bar over here on the far right, if my arrow will work, we would be looking at proposing a budget that would reduce this by three mils. I think it's always interesting to look at, when we talk about levies, to look at sort of a comparison. And if there's other comparisons that the board would like us to take a look at, we would be glad to look at those. But we believe that this is one that puts things in a nice perspective as far as the impact of the taxing authority that this board has on the public. And what it looks at is it takes the property taxes as a percent of the average home value in our district. And so, over the years, what we've taken is we've looked and received information on what is the average value of a home, whether it was $80,000 back in '93 or $186,000. And right now, the data is a little bit behind because it takes a while for us to, it's usually about a year and a half behind. We might be able to get 2004 data this fall, is what we're hoping for. But if you take that average value and you divide it by the actual property taxes, because I know that one of the things that we always talk about is that even though our board may maintain a level mil levy, if the assessed valuation of a home goes up, then the taxes could actually go up. And I think that that's a reality that we all deal with. What we're trying to do here is take that kind of, that kind of issue out of the discussion and look at the percentage of what taxes a person, a homeowner, pays as it relates to the value of the home. And that, we're thinking that that gives a nicer comparison of really the impact on the taxpayer in making those payments. And what we see basically from that, and I apologize for going into that much discussion, but I think it's an interesting comparison, history, is that we've been very flat, if actually been reducing over these many years. And it will be interesting to see where that plays out over the next couple as we catch this graph up. And finally, some considerations for the levy. There are six levy funds, the general, supplemental, extraordinary, capital outlay, bond and interest, and special assessments. And what we see there is that there really is nothing this board can do with three of those, the general fund, bond and interest, and special assessments. Those are what they are. The other three, we do have some opportunity to work with, depending upon what our needs are and what our objectives and goals are. And so, what we're suggesting, and now we are to the back page of the additional information that I have provided the board, and it is the one that has very small print on it and says notice of hearing. This is the, this isn't the official document that will be sent in because you'll notice it has a section on the far right that is for your purposes of convenience this evening of making some comparisons. The actual document that will be sent, signed, and sent over tomorrow morning will not- The actual document that will be signed and sent over tomorrow morning will not have that particular information, but for the public, I tried to get this information on the power slide here, and what we're showing here is that our current mill levy is 68.173 mils. Our initial discussion was that we were going to move the levy down three mils, which would be 65 mils, a reduction of three mils, and my apologies, but it's difficult to make it perfect, but 3.05 is where we came in. Capital outlay mils, according to that discussion, would be lowered to three and 1/2 mils, and we would make up the difference in Board of Tax Appeal, which flows into the LOB, and we didn't make a big deal about that last time, but the reality is extraordinary growth money, Board of Tax Appeal dollars, funnels through the general fund. The general fund impacts the local option budget, so you can't really impact the BOTA dollars without impacting the LOB in a small way, but it's tenths of a mill, but it does impact it. That was the initial discussion. What we now would like to have and bring to your consideration, another consideration, and that is that we would still reach the same goal of a reduction of three mils, but we would do so by reducing the capital outlay by four mils and then reducing BOTA and the local option budget by a little bit more. Now, the reason which we feel confident that we can do that is that when Mr. Otting and I were at the budget workshop on Monday, that was information that we heard at that point in time that we really had not included in earlier presentations and projections for the board. And what that essentially provided for is an opportunity for some additional operating funds to the general fund. And so by having that opportunity, we believe, those additional revenue flows, we believe that we can dig a little deeper into the BOTA dollars, which supplement the operating funds, a little deeper than what we had thought earlier, which would then allow for us to not have quite as large a reduction in the capital outlay, and therefore, that's the reason for this proposal. And so at this point in time, in conclusion, and we can go back to that, but in the conclusion for this presentation this evening, with your approval of the notice of hearing, which is for the full, you know, for the maximum, which only on that document reflects a .5 reduction, but that's just for the publication, looking at, having that published on Saturday the 5th, having a public hearing on the 16th, and after that point in time, looking for board approval, our intent would be, and I'm going to back up now, just so that you can sort of have that in front of you, our intent would be that if you give us a direction on one of these two, that we would go back and now complete all the documents, the official documents, and there's pages of these documents of which we really couldn't finalize until this last Monday. Randy's working very hard on that. He's worked very hard this week on other issues that the board has been working with and dealing with, and I appreciate his efforts in those areas, and also doing the treasury report, so we're not totally where we need, where we would like to be, but we're going to get there next week, and the intent would be, I think the 16th is two weeks from yesterday, so if we could get that information done mid, late next week and get that out to you before the public hearing, that would be our desire. That way, you'd have that information before you. So at this point in time, we'd be open for any questions that the board might have.
Just to guide our discussions, Board, as I, and Gary, correct me if I'm wrong, we need to do two things. One is taking action on the notice of hearing.
Yes.
And then, second, is give you direction on which of these two options we prefer.
Yes.
And that's not an action item, it's just a consensus item.
Yes.
Or anything else.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Deener, could you go back to the slide that has the budget priorities on it, please?
The priorities, the...
Yeah, right. Let's see, no, there's, yeah, right there.
That one, okay.
My view of this, and I think that this is great work on behalf of everybody, to me, the headline here is not mill levy reduction. To me, headline is all of the great things that are being achieved and funded in the district, and the fact that, as we've talked about balance over the past year, that we're achieving that.
Okay.
And so with that said, I am certainly find the new consideration to be an acceptable proposal.
I personally like the extra half-mill in capital outlay, because we know all of the needs that we have in our older facilities, and we've discussed that a great deal, and we know the needs are there, and we know that each day our schools have issued maintenance issues, so I like that extra half-mill there.
Everybody seems to be in general agreement with that. I think that gives you some direction then, Mr. Deener.
Thank you for the guidance, appreciate it.
Thank you. We also did, Board, need a motion on the public hearing.
So moved.
Mr. Pollan, thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Ashley, thank you for the second. Any further discussion on that motion? Moving to approve the notice of hearing for publication and the Lathan News for public hearing to be held at a special meeting on Wednesday, August 16th at 7:00 PM here at the Education Center. Mrs. Carpenter.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Thank you.
Mr. Gilmore, again, I can't resist this, a great team effort on behalf of the board, all the board members, and on behalf of staff, and on behalf of Dr. All.
I agree.
A lot of work, a lot of work that went onto this, and a lot of ideas and a lot of thoughts, and a lot of cooperation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parker. Let's see, we're on Item 7.02, boundary adjustment for undeveloped land formerly within the Regency Place attendance area. Mr. Grallop's going to be with us again. Do you want to offer some overview of this, Dr. All, before we begin?
Well, I'd just like to say, this is one of those areas that we've talked about, it sometimes gets pushed aside because we have other really important things to deal with. We'd like to remind you that in this particular area, the land we're talking about has no development in it, has no homes and no individuals living there right now. And so the assignment of this, I think, is something that we would like to get accomplished. I think the board would like to get it accomplished. There's not a real nice, clean way just to assign this without some implications. That's the challenge, but again, from the standpoint of those pieces of property, unless it's changed from Chris's knowledge, we don't have development going on in any of those areas yet, and so it is something for you to hopefully take action on or give us some advice to do something differently. And I don't know that we need a presentation as much as maybe we just need questions, and if you, Chris is here to answer them, and if not, take action on one of the options.
What is your pleasure, Board? Mr. Churchman?
I would say that after reviewing the alternatives, that option number four, to me, is the most palatable as it guides some potential population towards Tomahawk, which has the lowest utilization factor.
I favor that same choice. Would have one question, and I ask you, Chris, as to why we would need to move the junior high boundaries, and a question I have there is, they're going to change either from grade school to junior high or from junior high to senior high from their peer group, right?
No, not necessarily. Tomahawk, Tomahawk Elementary right now goes to Frontier Trail Junior High. For the most part, Tomahawk is kind of a unique school. For the most part, Tomahawk goes to Frontier Trail. All the kids from Tomahawk that go to Frontier Trail then go on to Lathan East. It's the only school to do that, but Tomahawk right now, for the most part, does go Frontier Trail, Lathan East, which would be the same change that we'd be proposing for this undeveloped land.
Okay.
So the part of option four would be this area would go to Tomahawk and then it'd go to Frontier Trail?
And then still stay at Lathan East.
Okay.
The one issue with that is that this area is actually north of California Trail, so they would have to drive by California Trail. Or, yeah.
No, it's west of it.
It's west and north, both.
Okay.
If you look at the map there, you can see it there.
They'll also have to walk right past Regency Place.
Correct, or look out their back window and see it, yes.
Want to addendum to option number four, for the board to consider that I do believe makes sense, and I understand the discussion for not doing it, is to take Section Number Four as some of the other options proposed and re-boundary that to Green Springs as well. I know it's contiguous with another area that goes to Regency Place, but knowing that it's not developed yet and would potentially be a separate subdivision, maybe not, I think that's an alternate consideration.
Right now, we do, under option four, that area, Area Four, is about 20 acres. Preliminary plot was approved for 50 lots. We do have that area going to Regency Place, A, just because it isn't contiguous with any other school district, the Lathan School, or any other elementary school attendance area. The school district hasn't ever had a non- contiguous boundary like that, and the impact of it, of 15 to 20 kids, is a minimal impact when you consider that spread over six or seven grades. You're looking at two to three kids per grade.
What's your pleasure?
I will make a motion that we consider, or that we not consider, that we adopt Option Four for re-boundary considerations of Regency Place.
Second.
That would include the junior high option as well, that those students would go to Frontier Trail?
Mr. Grallop, is that an imperative at this point in time to make that decision, or is that something that we could address further down the road as the need arose?
It's not imperative, it would be kind of an issue that we will keep, we'll keep track of. But yeah, it can be decided later if you so choose.
I guess my proposal would be, knowing that there are some discussions that need to happen around the junior highs, that maybe we table that to a later discussion. It's not something that I'm hard set on. I'd welcome other opinions.
Chris, does that totally have to do with the growth of those junior highs? Is that what it's weighted upon?
I mean, again, there's no, there are no students that are on this property right now.
Right.
So it isn't going to have, so it's difficult to tell you what kind of impact it's going to have. I just checked with the land records today about, and the land, all this land is still owned by the same people who have owned it for years previously, and so what you're looking at is a situation where we're planning for this land to develop at some point in the future. When exactly that land's going to develop, I mean, you could look at it and say, why hasn't it developed yet? And when it will develop is, your guess on that is as good as my guess on that. So in that regard, the impact on the junior high discussion is minimal. I mean, what I can tell you is California Trail's a big school, it's not going to get any smaller. The issue is whether you want to leave land in California Trail that, at some point in the future, don't know when, is going to produce students that, right now, would go to California Trail. Or you've got Frontier Trail, which is another junior high that is actually projected to decline in enrollment rather severely over the next few years, due primarily to the fact that the schools that feed it, Briarwood, Black Bob, Green Springs, are also declining in enrollments.
You know, it would be my personal preference that we make a decision tonight in regard to what that feeder pattern is going to be. I don't like leaving unknowns out there, and as this area develops, I mean, we don't, these kids aren't going to be going to Frontier Trail or California Trail next year, or probably even two years from now.
Correct.
That we can revisit this as we see how the populations occur in the junior highs, but personally, I would be in favor of us making a decision about what the junior high feeder pattern would be.
I would agree with Ms. Ashley on that, too.
I can accept that.
Make a decision, and...
I would, too, and I would follow their recommendations of the feeder pattern. That would be my recommendation.
So modify the motion to include that, change for the junior high feeder pattern as well?
Second. Okay.
Did you get that?
I think Mr. Pollan...
Mr. Pollan, second.
Well, you want to second that, then second the modification.
You're agreeing with his modification to his motion, Mr. Pollan, okay.
Sorry.
So we have a motion by Mr. Churchman, second by Mr. Pollan, to adopt Option Four, including the adjustment to the junior high feeder pattern to Frontier Trail. Is there any further question or discussion? Mrs. Carpenter.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Item 7.03 is proposed location of elementary school number 33. Dr. All, would you like to make some comments regarding this?
Well, it's my understanding from staff that this is the site, based on Chris's analysis, and property that we already own, that should be the site for that last elementary school in this bond, and so I just would stand for any questions with Chris here if you have about this location. As you heard earlier, in order to move forward in a timely way to get a school opened, it would be helpful to have this, we have multiple, we have several sites, and so to determine a site of where that next school's going to be so we can start moving forward, I think is key to have happen tonight. If you wanted to give any overview for reminder, refresher, we can do that, or if you're ready to go.
What's your pleasure, Board members?
I will make a motion that we approve construction of elementary number 33 on the district's property at 11601 Woodland Road.
Thank you, Mr. Churchman.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilhelm. Any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Item 704 is going to be moved till after our executive session, and we've already dealt with Item 705, so with that, we've dealt with future action items. We go to Item 9, calendar of events, we have some important dates upon us here in the month of August. Dr. All's done her best to put three or four or five meetings together for us.
I think it's a record month.
But please make sure those are attended to in your calendars, and with that, unless there's any questions on any of those dates, we need to move into executive session, and Dr. All, I'm estimating 30 minutes. So if someone will make a motion to that effect for 30 minutes?
I make the motion to recess to executive session to consult with attorney on matters deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship to protect attorney-client privilege and the public interest, and to discuss negotiations to protect the public interest in negotiation affair and equitable contract, and to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel protected privacy interests of those, of the individuals to be discussed, to return to regular session at...
Why don't we say 8:50, Mr. Parker? 8:50 PM. Thank you, Mr. Parker, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ashley. Mrs. Carpenter.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
And we will recess to executive session for 30 minutes.